Okay, let me go ahead and call the May 28, 2024 City Council meeting to order. Good to see everybody, it's a good crowd. We don't usually have this type of crowd and that's good. I see no knives or guns being flashed, so I think it's probably a good crowd. Let me say something if you don't mind, that Steve, Casey and I just were involved in with our planning commission and some of us that grew up here, a long time ago and still live here, remember when this was a sleepy little town and when we met at the city council, we didn't have a lot to do. And when we met at the planning commission, we might have a mom and dad that wanted to divide their property where the daughter or son could build a house, and we dealt with one and two-lot subdivisions. Now, we are dealing with, the last two years, we have approved a 12-lot subdivision, a 38-unit townhome building. We had tonight a proposal that could be as many as 116. I don't think it'll be that many, but it could be, and we are, things are changing here quickly. And just the fact of some of the agenda items we've got to deal with tonight are very different from what we've dealt with in the past. So, things are changing here. I'll leave it up to your opinion as to whether you think it's good or bad, but it's changing and it's something we have to, as the chairman of the planning commission said tonight, John Durel said, "We have to learn to manage this growth as best we can." We can't run it off, we can't lock the gate at the city limits, but we have to manage it the best we can. So, we're gonna do that, but I just want to say, I'm glad to see everybody tonight. Usually when we see this bigger crowd, there's tomahawks and knives and guns. I don't see any of that tonight, so I'm taking it's gonna be a good meeting, and I know some of the things we're gonna do are gonna be very good. But before we go any further, if you're by with me, we'll start out as we always do with a word prayer. Our Father in heaven, we're thankful for this day and for many blessings of life you've given us, Lord. We're thankful for the beautiful weather we've had today. We're thankful for you keeping us safe the last few days from the weather events that have been occurring here and around the midwestern part of the country. We pray that you will be with those people, as many of them are having to rebuild. We ask that you continue to bless this community and its people. We ask that you look after our folks that work for the city of Watertown, our police and fire and emergency people, as they too are having to deal with more things than they've ever dealt with in the past. So, we ask now that you go to this meeting and bless us and forgive us of our sins. Amen. All right, got a set of minutes from April 16. How do they look to you?
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Sir.
All right. Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The minutes are approved, and before I go any further, I better get my help here. I'm gonna move one thing up, if y'all don't care, and that's special recognition. And we have a young lady here tonight that we're gonna honor, and she has been recommended to us by Ms. Edie Pope, who is here on the back row, and I want some help with the name.
Mina Guda.
Mina Guda, okay. Maybe I'll get that right. All right, so I do want to say, I've got a resolution here that I and the city recorder have signed, and we'll present that to Mina. And I'll come around to the front, try to do something about making it seem good. So, who's Mina? Well, go around. Now, I'm guessing some of these folks, come on over here. I'm guessing some of these folks turned out, or you? Tell me, tell me who all you got.
My momma and my dad, and my cousin and husband, and then my aunt, my brother and his girlfriend, my grandma and I.
Okay, so they all look like friendly folks. Looks like you've got a very good family. Okay, you've forgotten Miss Pope. You got one more year.
She's, she's, she's Tiffany, too.
Oh, Tiffany, back there? Oh, I'm sorry, Tiffany. I probably look pretty professional. All right, this is a resolution of the Board of Mayor and Attorney of the City of Watertown, Tennessee, honoring Mina Guda. Did I get it right?
Yes.
Okay. Whereas Mina Guda is a student at Watertown High School, having just completed her junior year, and shortly will begin her senior year. And whereas Mina is an outstanding student who does music, nature and arts. And whereas Mina is a wonderful writer with a very creative mind. And whereas Mina has been involved with all aspects of Watertown High School, Purple Tiger Theater since she entered high school, excelling in her commitment to whatever role she is playing in a particular theater activity. And whereas Mina challenges herself by taking the most academically advanced courses available and consistently excelling in every one. And whereas Mina is bilingual, speaking English and Arabic. Did I say that right? You know, we speak southern here, so. And whereas Mina is of the highest character and caliber of conscientiousness, now therefore will be resolved by the Board of Mayor and Attorney of the City of Watertown, Tennessee, that we congratulate Mina Guda on her accomplishments to date at Watertown High School, and offer our best wishes and encouragement to her as she embarks on her senior year at Watertown High School, and encourage her to continue her education at the next level. Now, before I give you this, I've also been reminding, and I need to say how important she is to the theater and to the walk.
Mina's the primary writer of the historic Watertown walking tour.
Okay. And I'm gonna give you that. I kept it in there, because I wouldn't throw it up, or mess it up, or whatever. So, there you are. Yes, you're very welcome. And we're glad, and I need one of these side folks behind me to make a motion to approve that.
I'm gonna make a motion.
I need a second.
Sir.
Now, I need everybody to say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you're approved.
All right.
Good luck. I'm gonna get on my soapbox just a little bit to say, this is something we don't do enough of. We have heroes among us, older, younger, in between, that we don't recognize, and maybe we ought to do more of that. So, give that some thought. If you've got somebody you want to recognize, we'll be glad to do that. All right, I'll go back to the public business part of the meeting. If you're here and you have something you want to address to this city council and mayor, feel free to do so. Come up to the podium and give us your name and address, and we will hear what you want us to consider. Come on up, Bo. Good to see you. You're back in the States, I see you.
Glad to see you. You gonna be in Nashville again?
I am, planning on it. Until Sunday, I got a birthday party Sunday.
Better wear a hat.
Yep.
Go, boss. I'm actually here on behalf of my daughter, Kaitlyn.
Hi, Kaitlyn.
Kaitlyn lives at 343 Woodland, West Woodland Street, and we're specifically talking about her water bill. So, month before last, there was a leak. It got fixed. The bill was, I think, April, you might be able to help me confirm that, it was something around 35,000, 40,000 gallons, maybe? It was a lot.
The one back in the wintertime was 56,930.
So, we had to get that fixed, obviously. We did, or at least we thought we did, until we got the water bill for the month before last, which was 121,000 gallons of water. That's 16 by 32-foot, six-foot-deep swimming pools worth of water. Kaitlyn and her family, albeit they are a larger family, only use about 6,000 gallons a month, so it's a lot of water. So, the bill that came in was around $2,02100. And part of the reason I'm up here also, not just to represent hers, because I rent the house, so it's in my name. This is one of Roger Mitchell's houses. Not picking on Roger, but we told him about it once we found out that there was that much water. He came and fixed it. He raised the PVC pipes up to off the ground, which was part of the problem. She only noticed a puddle in the back, so the first thought is, well, was the meter correct? I can't answer that. It may be a faulty meter, but that's a whole lot of water. I don't think any of the businesses in this town use that much water. Heck, Michael, we had the, you know, the restaurant, we probably used 10,000 gallons, maybe.
Right.
So, I'm here to ask from the council, that we look at lowering that bill. The sewer part of it was $843, I think, something like that.
Does that sound right?
The sewer portion was 829.79.
829.79. Of course, there's tax on the water part of it, that would have to be adjusted as well. I'm hoping that we can get an agreement for 500 bucks. That can be paid in two installments starting tomorrow, and maybe in another two weeks.
What did we do on the last large one that we had?
You just asked my question.
Oh, do you recall, Laura? Anybody recall? What we did? You recall? I probably should go to staff for that.
The sewer was removed, and then the late fees was added. I think the late fees was removed as well.
Okay, and so we left the water portion intact?
Yes.
How much was, how much is Bo's water?
Okay, so, the whole total bill this time, well, of course, after the 10th, there was late fees. So, 17, 40, 40. After the 10th, 331, 90 was added on, and total 2,072, 30.
Okay.
The sewer portion of it is 829.75, and the penalty was 331, 90.
So, when you took the 800-something, dropped it down to about 1,200, 12-something, and then if we knocked off the late fees, which I think we did on the last one, did we? That gets it down to where they're just paying for the water. Okay. Let me, for people out there that are listening, people out in TV land, if anybody's inside on a beautiful night like this listening, we talked last time about going to that new program, and I jumped the gun a little bit. I thought we could put it into effect, and they now say August. We did away with our old adjustment policy, and I'm gonna recommend tonight at a later part of the meeting, that we put that back in place for the next 60 to 90 days. But still, that policy won't do what they're asking. So, what's the pleasure of the council? You've heard?
I do not have a problem with adjusting the sewer nor the late fees. However, we do have to pay for the water. But in a situation like this, because we do our sewer the way we bill our sewer, I do think it would be advisable to remove that.
Remove the sewer and the late fees?
Remove the sewer and the late fees.
Okay.
And it has to be paid off by the end, by the next billing cycle, or the late fees will accrue again.
Understood. So, it did have that it was due on the 29th? Or no, that was when it was late?
They're due on the 20th. Due on the 10th, late by the 20th.
So, I'm just, can we ask that it not be cut off until the end of that billing cycle?
Until June 20th.
And that'll give us time to pay care, pay it all at once, you know, for that time.
Making that as a motion?
Yes, I would make a motion that we remove the sewer and remove the late fees. It must be paid off by the next cycle, or the late fees accrue. Okay.
Sir, second?
I'll take a second.
Okay, discussion on this? We've had kind of an extraordinary year with the heavy snow and the very cold weather, and I don't recall having to adjust bills like this for several years, if any, but I think it's, we live in a community where we help each other. All right, discussion? If not, if you're ready to vote, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Done.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Thanks, council.
Appreciate it very much. Good to see you again.
Thanks.
Be safe, council.
Yep, that's right. You got a Georgia man up here, an Vanderbilt man, though, and they both, they're both in the tournament, so. Some of us may be happy, some of us not. Come on up, Mr. Dowd, how you doing?
Oh, pretty good. Tim Dowd, president of Historic. I have some basic information. I passed out a trade schedule for the rest of the year to everybody.
Saw that.
And we have the bike ride on, before you leave, real quick, I want to thank you very much, because I got a really nice letter from the drama department. Thank you, that was my next line, so, a little too soon, but thank you very much for that letter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all right.
The bike ride, I already talked to chief, is gonna be June 8th, and Historic is not involved this year with it, other than trying to help them set it up. It's a charity ride.
Okay.
It will start 6:00 a.m., and it will start in the square. And I've asked the chief to be there at 6, have somebody there at 6:00 a.m. just for the start, in case there's any problems.
Lead them out.
Yeah, just to have problems. The Atwood House is gonna be going under a lot of repairs. It's getting old, needs plumbing and all this sort of stuff. I've asked for an $8,000 grant from the tourism department. We'll see if we get that. And with time permitting, I know that Bob is so busy, he can't do anything without on schedule, but with time permitting, I was wondering if the trash in the square needs to be picked up before the trains, train days?
Sure.
Because I've been out there, I've gone out there and dumped it myself, and.
So, you talk about on Friday, Friday before the guys go home?
On a train weekend, have it dumped, because there's a lot, I've noticed there's a lot of people that are coming in and putting their trash in trashcans instead of driving down the street and getting rid of it.
We have the same problem over here.
Yeah, I figured, and.
Yeah, if y'all will remind me of that before train day, I tell you what, we'll just ask Bob and them to do it every Friday afternoon before they go home.
Okay, and the last is, I'd like to invite any member of the city council here to come on train day, or any other times if you want to get in there, and sit at the Atwood House and meet these people that come in from Nashville. You're more than welcome to come down and sit with us, because we actually have somebody there all day long, and most of the time it's for emergency plumbing, but, so, I really appreciate it if you guys would come down and see what we do. Right, thank you.
Thank you. This is a good schedule. This is a couple more than what we've been having, isn't it?
Yes.
I'm glad to see that increase.
Now, there is a chance the Jazz Festival or Music Festival may go on in June.
Okay.
That's the city, that the chamber's trying to work on that.
Okay.
Right now, it's not scheduled.
Okay.
In June or July?
July.
June.
June.
Huh? Says July 20th on.
Okay, yeah, okay, so it says July. So, they're trying to have something at that time.
Okay.
They're still trying to get something going.
Okay, July 20th, the anniversary of the day the man first walked on the moon.
And thank you, the city, very much for the beautiful, the work you guys did on.
Thank you for the work y'all did. Good, we appreciate you. All right, anybody else? Okay, we'll close the public business and get to some reports here. And looks like Dale Smith is up first tonight with sewer.
All right, we did get the pumps installed in Commerce Avenue, our main pump station there installed, and obviously everybody's seen the sewer projects that started working, they're putting in some liners and the pipes now. One thing I do need to bring up is Smith County Landfill, where we dispose of our solid waste from the sewer plant, has lost their ability to take special waste. And I've found a new place, Republic Services that hauls for the city of Lebanon, is able to haul this to another landfill, but there is gonna be, you know, a little bit more expensive than what we were previously hauling at. I'd like to go ahead and start using them. I don't think anybody has any problem with that, but.
I don't know that it requires approval, because we've gotta do it, this is more information.
Right, we don't have a whole lot of options.
It's gonna cost us more money, and there'll have to be more in the budget for it next year. But Dale, the Commerce Avenue work that they did, is everything good?
Yeah, I'm still, they need to send an electrician back out. I haven't reprogrammed how the pumps are coming in on and off, but I'll have, you know, I'll have them come back out, they're scheduled to come out this week and get that fixed, but they are running and running well, though.
As I mentioned to you, certainly we'll pay them when they get done, but I want to make sure we've got what we've contracted for.
Right.
You let me know when that is.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody got any questions to Dale? He's got a little bit more business tonight than he's had in the past.
I've got one comment, because, and I got a couple phone calls about this this past week. With the sewer rehab, and can we ask them to be conscious of the fact that they don't need to block 100% of a street where people can't get through their houses?
Yeah, I'll call them in the morning and talk to them about that.
That's.
We may want to figure out how to let everyone know that they should probably make sure the toilets are flushed and toilet seats are packed, because.
Like, they have been putting up door knockers.
If our house, for some reason, we had a overflow.
Yes, okay.
Well, and, I was gonna say, we're on the same street. The door knocker we got said they'd be there Friday, and my wife was calling me on Monday when I was in Cleveland, Ohio, and my neighbor was calling me on Tuesday when I was still in Ohio. So, the door knocker notice did not match up with the dates when they were. So the door knocker notice did not match up with the dates when they were actually doing the work.
Okay.
Maybe just tell everyone to make sure the toilets, things that are flushed and packed, lid closed, it's, it's, it's mess, so...
When we had the pre, the pre-construction meeting, they told us that they would do everything that y'all were asking about, so apparently, we need to have that discussion again.
Okay, I'll get ahold of them and, uh, bring that up.
It was a very nice, it just, it just was quite the...
And, uh, did my wife call you, 'cause she didn't like the way the roads were blocked, either. I can't hardly get around, yeah, I understand.
One called my wife, who said, "I can't get around," and that was not a pleasant call.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. King.
Did they start on Main Street with this project?
Yeah, they've been on.
Okay, 'cause, well, I think we liked our first ones to get hit with that, and it did. My neighbor across the street, Ms. Joyce Patterson, she had an explosion in her bathroom, and what they had to do was go release something in the front yard to make a vent for that.
Okay.
And so after we went up, hitched fit and told them, "What are you doing?", and nobody said anything about they were coming, we just suddenly had a deluge in three or four houses. So, um, then they started taking those things out of there.
I think the part of the problem is, like, our house is older, the plumbing is on, you know, there's a P truck anywhere.
Well, ours is built in nineteen ten, but we were on the high side, and she was on the low side.
She's on the very low side.
She did a harder time, and she was not happy to clean that up.
Sounds like they need to make sure they're open and cleaned out, out in the yard before they start.
Okay.
Yeah, they did start doing that apparently, because nobody else came and told me, but I had to tell four of our neighbors, "If you find this when you get home, because I know you've been gone all day, this is what happened."
Yeah, a lot of houses, like, I understand they'll clean out, and that's part of that problem, but if, if we would've known, it would've been pressure to keep your toilet lid down, it would've been drastically less disaster.
You, you will mention that to them, and I'll try to stop in the morning on my way out and mention that, when they hang the door knockers, let's make sure we do it on the day that you say you're gonna do it on, or hang another door knocker, you know? Um, okay. I did, they did tell me the other day, when I talked to them, that, you know, some of the things on Richland weren't really great, but they said West Main was just full of roots, and they really had to work to get that out of there, and it's been that way for years, but I didn't really res, uh, really realize it was that bad. But they said, uh, it should be a lot better now, we'll see. We're paying for it to be better.
We hope so.
Yep. Any other questions to Dale, comments? Thank you, sir.
Uh-huh.
Uh, next up is Fire Department Chief Hong.
Good evening.
Hey, Chief.
Uh, last month, in April, we had a total of thirty-five calls, eleven of those in the city and twenty-four in the county. Uh, we're kind of dropping, as I'd said before, we're dropping our, uh, total calls a little bit, but what we're doing in the city, uh, up until this month has increased, so we're running more in the city and a little less in the county, keeping everything pretty well stable. We don't have, uh, any issues, nothing major to report. Uh, there was one thing that, uh, I wanted to request from you all. We're looking to, uh, replace our Suburban, and what that, just a little information on that, what that is used for is our medical calls, um, whether we go Main Street or wherever. Uh, that's been very beneficial to us throughout the years. It's a gas burner, small vehicle, uh, as opposed to using the diesel fire trucks and putting more wear and tear on that, so it's, it's been very instrumental to us, um, and we've definitely got our use out of it throughout the years. What we're looking at, uh, doing is very similar to the way that it was originally purchased, and, uh, that would be to replace it, uh, as a donation to the city, so it wouldn't be any cost to the city, um, and it would come from a government, uh, surplus. We've spoken to a lot of where these, uh, vehicles are surplus, and many of the suppliers are, um, it's all government agencies, but a lot of them will surplus at sixty-five thousand miles. So they will purchase a vehicle, it hits sixty-five thousand miles, and they put it on for surplus. So that's kind of the pool of what we're looking for. Uh, we're looking for something that's less than ten years old, so that it'll carry us into the future, less than a hundred thousand miles, and be in good physical working condition, and, um, not really have any issues. Just trying to be proactive on, in the future, of trying to get something that'll hold us for a long time. What we've looked at so far, um, because there's a lot of other agencies that's very similar to us, um, that's looking at these, so when a vehicle goes on there, it may last a day, it may go a week, uh, which is kind of difficult for us to say, "Hey, this is what we would like to get, bring it back to the council the next month, and it's gone." So, uh, unless you all have any other recommendation, what I would like to get approval for is to be able to replace it as a donation to the city, uh, meeting those specifications of less than ten years old, be in good working condition, and less than a hundred thousand miles.
I'll recommend that to you. I think that's reasonable, and the old Suburban does need to be replaced.
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Chief, our, our responsibility, of course, will be to add it to the insurance as soon as you get it, let us ensure.
Right, and that the intent is, when that one is put in place, the other one will be taken out, and at that point, I would be requesting it to be surplused and, uh, sold under the city, so.
Will it already be equipped with everything you need, or will we have to do like the police did, and then have it go be equipped? Like, how does that work with the fire?
So, everything that, uh, we have in the, the Suburban currently will transfer over, so it won't come equipped, but we do have the equipment for it, so...
It's all the radios and the inside bits will transfer from one place.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Is that a cost? We would have to pay, have it transferred over?
No, we can do the, the install on that, so...
Okay, questions to the chief? All right, thank you, Chief.
I don't, y'all have anything else? All right.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Before we go any further, I neglected to ask John, was there anybody out there on public business wanting to comment?
There's no comments.
Nobody watching?
There are people watching, there's just no comments.
All right, that's good. All right, Chief Fender Light, it's police time, you'll be first next time.
You have any questions? We're up over two hundred calls, we're up over five hundred calls for the last month, probably six to seven hundred this month. Uh, it's a lot going on, a lot of arrests, of late, a lot of domestics, things have happened, a lot of other things that are worse have happened, but how are we on the state? So, one of my full-time guys told me last night that he was probably fixing to leave. Uh, the mayor had asked not to fill Mr. Bill's position, uh, had to bring one of the part-time guys, James Brown, over, uh, because he has not been to the academy, but he will help fill the void of the officer that left that was in the academy for the grant, and that's the grant that the council approved that we would do, so I brought James over. Uh, so, you know, we're, right now, we're unsure, if he does leave, I don't know whether he won't, then we'd be too sure, but James will have to go to the academy, and that'll be three months, basically. But while he's in, you know, we'll pay him, but the grant will pay us back for the academy and some of his time there, and the money specifics are on the grant thing that you signed that you had.
So, do we have some good applicants out there that you'd like to talk to?
We really do. We have three that are ready to go, that have already been to the academy, that we wouldn't have to see them. I'm not recommending we hire three more, I'm just saying that we have...
But you have two openings.
Yes, we have, well, actually, we have, uh, one full-time and then two part-time, because we pulled James out, and all we have is Officer Johnson left in the full-time part. We're supposed to carry three part-timers.
Okay.
And then, you know, we have Officer Willis, which we discussed, and then there's me, James Kerway, Fidenzia Medina, and Connor Morgan.
So you're ready to hire somebody?
Uh, we do need to hire somebody.
Sounds like we do. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. Two things, or maybe I can't identify them that easily. I'll just say it like it occurs to me, I don't want somebody else's trouble. If they left the department under circumstances, I don't want them.
Right, I understand that.
And, uh, I know that some of the folks who want, who left here or threatened to leave here to go to a department, it is absolutely in turmoil, and I'm not looking for any of those people to come back here either.
I understand.
They gotta get that straightened out themselves down there. Okay.
Just to clarify, we've got one full-time position, we've taken. That's great. Is, is that former chief's position, or is that another position? So, the answer to that is no, but yes, so when you all were gracious enough to give me the chief spot, that'll open up the assistant chief's spot, so that, that budget is paid is open, and I only have an assistant, unless y'all just want me to have one. Uh, some of the other guys can take over some of those roles assigned to them by just making a lieutenant or a sergeant, something of that, um, but we have also, you know, had also considered, uh, maybe not filling that spot, and trying to give some raises out of the money that was there, so it didn't increase the budget, because we, we weren't under strain here, under sewer water, so, you know, that's, that's something that you all have to decide. You know, if we, if we have four full-timers and me, we have your shifts covered, but we still have to hire some part-time people as well.
Right.
And if we had the, uh, if they chose not to do raises with that salary that was already in the budget accounted for, then you could hire somebody, and then, you know, that would really help us, we wouldn't have to hire another part-timer, because your other full-timer, you'd have one more full-time position, which is really helpful to me, because what we ran into a long time ago, I know you'd sent an email sometime back, and we just hadn't had, you hadn't had the chance to meet with me, so we had the part-timers, we had to name our shifts, the part-time folks were the ones that worked the weekend, well, yes, you know, those folks worked a full-time job. The county had issues and concerns about not having post-certified officers on the weekends, but when they're on the weekends, they make an arrest or something, then they have to miss their full-time job, well, they're only gonna get paid ten to three hours, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen dollars an hour, so they've lost a whole day's work, and that's why we went to the twelves to program this, so we would always have two full post-certified officers on duty at all time, even on the weekends. And then, because of the money that the folks think they have to make to work in this job, it gave them four days to work something off duty that we would approve, that the police did, so it kind of balanced out, so that's how I like to happen. Did that answer?
So one full-time, one part-time, and then we're back?
We need two full, part-time, and maybe one for, yes, yeah, we're, we're, we only have one part-time officer, and he can't work anymore because of some...
Yep. All right, so, start the process.
Okay.
Now, when they hire, does it come through you? Does he have that hiring capability? How does that work?
He hires, and then we bring him to the council to be approved, and anybody we hires on a ninety-day probation, so they don't get any insurance or anything like that until day ninety-one.
And you do reference checks, and, 'cause we've ran into, you know, my other job, sometimes not do reference checks, and how that turned out?
Well, it, it's not an option for us, because, you know, you all regulate us, we're really regulated by Post. Post tells us what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it, and when we're gonna do it.
I mean, credit checks, that's in his personality, and, you know, that kind of...
Yeah, we do not do credit checks.
I mean, not credit checks, I didn't make you say that.
But we have to do psychological examinations, physically.
Reference checks, just to see the personality, that's not what you show upon a piece of paper.
Yes, but, you know, and one of the things y'all should think is, what can you really say about an employee that just left? Most people are like, "Yep, you worked here, here's, here's the dates, and that's it." You know, I revised our, uh, application process where the, it's a twofold, that you can get, you know, it signs, hey, you can get my personnel file and everything, but a lot of times, you don't get that, sometimes you don't get it from other agencies, but, you know, we, on the backside, we rely on Post. I send Post an email, hey, is this guy in good standing in the community, in the Post world, and if he is good, if he's not, then we go to the next one. But yes, there are references, but, I mean, most people only put references on their application, people that they're close with.
Basically, social media is great, references.
Yeah, but social media can be the other side, too.
Oh, yeah, we can see a whole lot of people's...
Yes.
All right. Other questions, comments? We're good?
This is briefly discussed before, but, um, I think we need to have a working session with Randy and the Chamber about how, I mean, that our food truck ordinance requires that provides you a list, or provides a city list of the food trucks that are gonna be there, and we need to, we need to try to follow that, otherwise, we can't manage that two-event inception we put in there for community events, and I, I, I think we're probably, the one from the Chamber, the one from the Chamber of Commerce knows what we know, has read that ordinance, or has been reviewed.
Well, we do, and we did discuss that, and we said, the mayor did say, and we did acknowledge that, and we really do, and to give you another example, like, the, you know, the train stuff's on the internet, but when they don't request an officer, you got seven hundred people in the middle of the city, guess who's responsible for them? You know, and when they get off the train, they don't just walk on the sidewalks, in the middle of the road, and we usually only have one officer, so, you know, again, you know, during that roundtable, when we, when we're able to have that, we need to discuss, you know, some kind of whatever agreement we need to get, you know, there probably needs to be an officer, an extra officer dedicated to that, not necessarily to block something, but just to be there for safety.
Right, and I'm not opposed to us putting it back, if our Chamber does a good job, they do a lot for, for us, you know, but if they're gonna have these train days, they need to have, maybe work with the help of crowd control, you know, to keep people from walking down the street when the street's not closed. You would think that'd count the sense, but, you know, Jerry, the yard's like, we got a food truck sitting in the middle of the park that went amongst cars.
Yes, and also, I wanna touch on one thing, we talked about the street stuff being blocked, and we, I probably had more phone calls and texts than you all did, but you all got them from the people that you're close to and see everything. I did go over, uh, one of the gentlemen, he understood after I told him, his boss come to me the next day, and the whole point was, we understand that the mayor and the council, and all, we have those people here for a contract, but they still have to have a flagger or somebody out there, especially when they block the whole road, and what was happening was, when they were on East Main, you know, people come up, go over the bridge, and then they go over that, that, the line they have across the road, well, you have the lower car to skid the homes, and they didn't have anybody out there. But now, I did talk to the, one of the owners, uh, he come up, took me, he posed, very nice, and he did correct that issue, but I did tell them, "You cannot be out here with somebody not flagged," and I said, "You know, I don't have a guy to put out here, I could call somebody in, but I'm sure you don't wanna pay that," and it wasn't about being ugly to them, it was just about the safety of it, because at one time, you could not get through on Richland, literally, people had to back up, and that is true, and I was like, "Hey, you know, we have to let our people know, we have to be able to get out," but it was a situation, and, you know, he responded well, and he did put somebody flagged, and said that it would not happen again.
Well, that company was in the pre-construction meeting that was held in my, the library in my office, and they committed to a flagger and also to the, uh, door knockers and that type of thing, so if they're not doing that, make a list or send it, so I can send it to Steve Jones, uh, to make sure that we're not paying for something we're not getting.
Right, well, the first three days, you didn't get a flagger, but we did after that.
Was it right there in the school hour?
Yes.
In the morning time, and there was not a flagger, and you had people come in?
We'll have to see what, uh, what their first bill payment request is, if it's got enough...
And he was very aware, for him to find me in town... And he was very aware, for him to find me in town, he had to be aware of something, and he said it wouldn't happen because the gentleman on the side spoke with one of my other guys, and he was not as kind as the boss was the next day. But at the end of the day, you know, it's like I said, you have to do it, it's not an option. We're all similar guys, and, you know.
And we're busy for...
Yeah, and I mean, it would've been, because you do have to have somebody no matter what.
Sure.
So...
Okay. Other questions, comments? Anybody? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, got a few items of business. I guess we might as well start on the bond issue. We closed on the bond issue this morning. April and I signed about, seemed like a hundred and fifty documents, but a lot. As I told the law firm that was doing it, this reminded me of writing off in school where, you know, I will not talk in class, you wrote it over and over, signed my name, that's what it seemed like. But we got a good bond rating, let me start with that, a good bond rating for Moody's. We got an A1, which kept our interest rate reasonably low. The low bidder on the bonds was 4.03 percent. We, uh, closed on that this morning, and I'm looking for my notes, April. Well, it was a little over fifty-five million dollars on the, was it not, on the closing? Okay, fifty, what?
Five point five.
No, I'm talking about the total bond thing, it's fifty... Oh, five, I said, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Steve. Five point five. We have to, we pay the, all the issuance costs, the underwriter fees and all that stuff, and it's about fifty-nine thousand dollars plus. But we can repay ourselves from the bond proceeds. So, uh, we're getting that, that back. One thing, the law has changed, we found out this morning, and that is that the money we get, and it will be here Thursday in our account, a separate account, can be invested, and the interest earned can be used to go back into the project to offset some of the expenses. What we were suggested this morning was the local government investment pool, which is a thing created by the state of Tennessee that takes your investments. They pool them all together, they are collateralized, so you don't lose any money. And right now, they're paying about 5.3 percent. So if we're paying out 5.3, and if we're receiving 5.3 and paying out 4.03, we stand to make a little money there. Now, we won't make a lot, 'cause all this money's gonna be gone in a year. But, uh, local government investment pool's something I'm gonna look into. We had talked to Wilson Bank and Trust, but what they had proposed was substantially less. Not being critical of them, they're just, they are, have limited options. The pool gives more options. And Kyle, you mentioned another thing, help me remember what it was.
USDC, I have to look them up and see which, where you would get them from. The USDC offers a five, I think it's a 5.3.
Okay.
Straight on money that can be pulled in or out anytime.
Okay, and that was the same way the local government investment pool, you can draw down the money at any time. So we'll look into that, get that invested, and try to make as much money as we can. One other thing I am required to do, we have to turn in to the comptroller's office a Form C T O two five three, and it is a summary of the transaction. It has all the costs associated with it, it has to be itemized, and that will be turned in Thursday by Bass, Bier, and Simms as soon as the money is received. We do not have to vote on this, but I do have to announce it to you tonight, and it has to be included in the minutes. So it will be there. So, uh, everything went well. You know, as I'll get to in a few minutes, the hard part's still to come. But, um, anybody got any questions about my rambling? Okay. Let me give you an update on the other, um, projects, which is not as much. Uh, we're still working on the water project and jumping through all the hoops. That actually has more requirements than we thought, but we have the grant, we just got to do everything that they ask for. Uh, street paving, of course, we'll have to see what they get done with the sewer, and then we'll revisit that. And finally, we did apply on the twenty-third for the Chrissy Grant, again, for the turntable. We upped our request to 2.4 million because, like everything else, every year, costs go up. We have asked for a sixty-seven, thirty-three percent. Our match would be thirty-three percent. That would come from the governments and from a private donor who has expressed some interest in a substantial amount of money. So it'll be a while before we hear from that, but it's out there. And it got filed on time. So, um, would y'all have any questions on anything I've talked about there? Nothing that requires any action tonight that I'm aware of. I did mention earlier about us going back and extending our current water leak policy, so I'd like to do that until, I'd like for the motion, if you're inclined to, to extend that water leak policy until we get the served line or whatever the company was in place. So that way we'll at least have a, a policy.
Can I make a motion to extend it for ninety days?
Okay, is there a second?
That's just one of the insurance parts.
Yeah, yeah. We're going back to where we were for at least ninety days.
Do we work in ninety days, or do we just wanna extend reinstated our previous policy to expire when the insurance expires?
Um, we can do it either way. I was told that it's probably gonna be August before they can do it, so here we are. May's gone, we have June and July, and I don't know what that August means, first of August or sometime in August. Probably we oughta stay with ninety days, I'm guessing, Steve, just to be safe. If we find out it's gonna be sooner, I can bring it back to you, and we can cut it back.
Well, I guess my thought is if, if, if we reinstate it to expire when the insurance is, becomes effective, if they're sooner, it will expire, if they go into September, it will, we don't have, it would cover us either way.
I'm good with that too, if Laura wants to make that part of the motion.
Yes, I will change it. When we retract that, and I make a motion to extend our water insurance until our water policy, until the new comes in place.
Okay.
Is that right?
Yeah.
All right, is there a second? Okay, discussion? Who are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you for that. I sent you something about a request to make Main Street from one end of town to the other part of the Bicycle Route Eighty. And, you know, we have a lot of people ride bicycles through here. Mr. Dowd's talked about the, the big event we have every year. I don't think that gives me any concern. What, Chief, what do you think about making that a bicycle route?
They're gonna have to have a shoulder for the, you know, for the cars. If you've got your current company, you better have a path.
Wait a second, so we're gonna have to go to some expense to do that?
They don't know how it'll work, but you'd have to give them legal access to that road and allow for cars to pass. So that would be a...
All right, I think I'm gonna withdraw this tonight and ask more questions and talk to the chief about it and bring it back perhaps next month.
That's kinda like the part of the Greenway stuff in Murphy's Borough.
Yeah.
That's part of their stuff, and so that would be, that would be more to make sense.
Okay. I'll, unless you just won't act on it tonight, I won't ask for you to act on that. Got a budget report, we're still, um, we're still running a little short in two of our departments, uh, two of our funds. But one of them, we are allowed under this bond issuance to go back and reimburse ourselves all the money we've paid to water management on this process. And what was the other thing, April?
The publication of the notices.
The publication of the notices. And that is gonna be several thousand dollars, which is gonna be instrumental in getting our water and sewer hopefully back right side up. It'll be close. But that, that, that is something that's favorable, and so we'll, we'll see how that goes. Trying to think if there's anything else I need to tell you about that. We did last month pass two ordinances on first reading I asked you to do to adjust the budget. Basically, paper transfers. Let me find them here, believe it or not. When I got here, I was a little better organized. Planning commission was a little bit more complicated than I thought it was gonna be. The first one was where we took money out of the fund balance in water, in, excuse me, water and sewer. Two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety dollars, that will be to pay for the Commerce Avenue thing improvement. We need, we approved that on first reading, I need to ask you to approve that on second and final reading. So we can take it out of our reserves, is what we're doing.
I'll make a motion to approve.
My second.
All right. Questions, comments, discussion? I don't like spending money anymore than y'all do, folks, and we're spending a lot, but it's gotta be done. All right, ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. The other one was moving the grants that Chief Interlake talked about, that we've gotten from the state. One was seventy-six thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty dollars. One was four thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and seven cents. But we're moving that into the revenue side. We've already been spending the money through the years, so that needs to be done to help the general fund as, as well. So recommend that to you on second and final reading.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Do we have discussion, questions, comments? All right, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Now, let me talk to you about the budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. The big elephant in the room, of course, is what we're gonna have to do with water and sewer rates. I don't have a recommendation for you tonight. We are under direction from the comptroller's office to have a study done on our structure and where we are losing water. The gentleman who's supposed to be doing it for us has not gotten me a contract yet. I sent him an email this afternoon saying I need that. Somebody called about four o'clock, but I was tied up with all this other stuff, and I couldn't talk to him. But, um, I'm not ready to make a recommendation on that yet. I wanna make sure that we're getting all the savings that we can before we implement or consider implementing the water and sewer rate increase. The, um, what it, what it will take, of course, is an exact figure, and I want that figure to be enough to cover what we have to have. I don't want it to be a lot more, but I want it to cover what we have to have. I think the worst-case scenario would be if we raise rates and then find out we didn't raise them enough, and we have to come back and do it again. That's when people really squawk. So I'm, I'll, I'll try to put all that together for you, and I will return this gentleman's call tomorrow. The second elephant in the room, it's not as big, but it's something that I would really like to accomplish, and it's been mentioned around this table, so I, I feel certain of support for it, is to try to work some type of retirement, uh, retirement process or whatever, not, not to retire, but when they retire, when the employees retire. And I'd like to be able to come up with that, and with your input. I know several of you mentioned several things to, to me. Which leads me to this. The comptroller, the comptroller several years ago started requiring us to have our budget done by June thirty. Before that, we never got our budget done by June thirty. We would adopt a continuation budget, which meant you kept the current one in place, and then you had time to finalize your figures and get a budget in place by about end of July or sometime in August. They frown on that now, but I am going to draft a letter, hopefully in the morning, to them, and ask them for permission to do a continuation budget and cite all of these issues with water and sewer about how we don't know exactly what we're gonna do yet, and probably can't give them a firm, or give you a firm answer in the next thirty-four days. Well, I hope they'll approve that, but if they don't, I'm gonna have to, it's gonna be a crapshoot, for lack of a better term, in, in preparing this. But I'm gonna send that, doesn't require any action tonight on the budget. And the third thing is, we've got some ARC money that we've been sitting on for a while. They are, they being, a different branch of the state is basically calling saying, why ain't you spent the money? And we've been kinda holding it back because of all these other things going on. We'll have to come up with a plan of that, and I'll recommend something to you, and then what we do with it's up to y'all. But I've got some ideas on that, and try to make that go as far as we can for as many projects as we can, so... I wish I could tell you more about the budget tonight, I can't. When we leave here tonight, I'm gonna ask you to recess instead of adjourn because if the comptroller comes back and says, I can't give you that grace, then I will have to get busy and try to pull numbers from somewhere. But if they'll give me some grace, then that gives a little bit of breathing room. But if they don't, I'll need to call you back in a session, 'cause we gotta pass it twice, which would be in the recess meeting and the June meeting. So, uh, that's kinda where we are. Anybody got any questions about that? Anybody got any magical solutions? Please share them with me, if you have them. Don't hold out on me. If you know how to fix this, let me know, and I'll be glad to give you the credit. One other item we do need to vote on, and that is Round Lake Church has requested use of the park on Sunday, June thirty, and Sunday, July twenty-first, for what they call Sunday Fun Day. They're gonna have two days. One of those days will be for the youth class, or youth class of individuals, and the second one will be for seniors. Now, they did not define seniors, but, and I'm not even gonna hazard a guess on who qualifies for that and who doesn't. But they're asking for, uh, the event will be from four to six both times. They'd like to have the park from three to seven, hour to set up and an hour to clean up. So I certainly can recommend that to you. I don't know that we've got anything else going on in the park. Do you know of anything else?
What was the dates again?
Uh, June thirtieth and July twenty-first. And I'm going by the dates they gave me, so if that doesn't match up with the Sunday, I...
I'll question to approve, some questions, what's going on?
I have one question. I mean, again, back to, they're having an event, are they gonna have liability insurance for their event?
They'll have to be required, we have liability.
As long as the city's named as additional insured.
Yep.
I will second that.
Okay. All right. Got a motion and a second to approve subject to liability insurance being provided, proof of liability insurance being provided. Discussion, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, got a couple of informational items, and one of them ties back to what we just talked about a minute ago, but I wanna publicly thank Jeff Tonks and everyone that worked on this community league this year. From my standpoint, we had a better league over here this year than we've had in some time. I don't know, did y'all have a lot of police issues?
We only had two, and both of them were on camera, and I think that it's really about a wake-up. And that's it, both of them were reds. Both of them were reds, but that, but that was just being silly.
Okay.
But no, you know, one altercation, that was it, and it was short-lived.
We, I think, I think it was a good year. Jeff did a good job of setting it up and managing it throughout the year. We had the closing ceremonies last Tuesday night, a week ago, last, week from last night. Last Tuesday. Um, everything went smoothly, um, had some all-stars selected, kids seemed happy, they got medallions, first and second place teams got trophies. I didn't hear any complaints, um, and as my good friend, used to be the school director here, Dr. Duncan, used to say, if it doesn't get to my desk, it's not a problem. And that's kinda the way I feel about it, too, so.
As a parent, it was much better vision than last year.
Yeah. And Jeff's entire family worked it, and they took care of the concession stand with the help of, of, uh, team members, but there was somebody in charge there every night rather than wondering who was gonna show up and who didn't. And I think from all indications, we finished in the black on that, and that's one that we need to, because we tell people we run, we don't spend any tax dollars on it, and we don't. So I appreciate them, just wanted to say that publicly. And the other thing was, our next regular meeting night will be June 18th. Stay flexible with me if you can, 'cause it'll depend a lot on the budget and that type of thing. Um, so.
Going back to Mr. Tonks, uh, if I'm not mistaken, they are needing some, somebody to kinda take over the soccer.
He found somebody. He announced the other night.
He did? Okay. I did not hear that. Okay.
He, he announced.
'Cause I was getting kinda worried that they were gonna be asking the council members.
I was, too. A lot of the kids love to play soccer.
They do, they do.
The old guys don't understand it, but the little kids do. Uh, but he, he announced from the press box the other night during the closing ceremony that he had somebody.
Strike them.
Um, and I assume they're gonna start playing pretty soon. Okay, that's all I have. We'll run the table and start with you, Ms. April.
I'm okay.
What about you? Pole over there, is anything?
Nothing. Still it. I don't, I don't, I don't.
There'll be something we can do about that.
I think it's an AT&T thing, but.
Is it? Not Middleton Selecra?
I think the AT&T's the problem.
Yeah.
You might be touching the wrong one.
Okay.
Milton Selecra, um, it's all gonna be permission from AT&T, 'cause it's their lines.
Okay.
Cal, did you have any luck with your AT&T contact?
No. I asked him about it. He's not so big. He said.
Let's take the uniball's expectations.
He said he had some.
It's low voltage.
We have no filter.
Well, we'll press on. I'm not sure where we're pressing, but we'll press on.
I thought contact was the stuff, but I don't know.
You know, there, it's out of our jurisdiction, but there are a couple of poles out there at the sewer plant on the other side that are leaning pretty badly, and, uh, I hope that don't fall on somebody one night.
It came up in the planning commission, there's a pole over there in Grand and Grand Annex that's in, in the way of school buses, apparently.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, there's one right there, I know, but where she can drive well and where she can't. It has nothing to do with her driving ability, I didn't mean for it to sound like that.
It's, yeah.
All right.
That's a challenge.
Caleb? How was Disneyland, Disney World? Didn't you go?
I went.
I thought you went between our meeting last time and this. Okay. Well, you'll understand that one of these days when you get my age.
Yeah.
Things run together.
I just plugged my life with physics challenges, everybody was kidding.
All right. Cal?
I think one of the things we gotta do about retirement, this was one of the priorities for most of the bank.
I'm, I'm pretty committed to putting something in place. Now, whether or not it'll be a great plan or not, I don't know, but I would like to see that done in next year's budget.
Theirs is a, require a 2% contribution, the city don't have to match what their employee puts in, but it's, their part is 2%.
That's the simple IRA, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. There, there's, basically, there's two options under that, 'cause I've looked at it more than once. One option is a 3% match, which you don't know what they're gonna contribute. They contribute less than 3%, we're paying less than 3%, but the other option is a flat 2% contribution, even if the employee contributes nothing. And that is something we can very easily budget for, 'cause we know exact, we know what our payroll is, we know what our payroll budget is, so it would be 2% of our payroll budget. I don't know how overtime gets handled in that. We would need clarification on that. But normally, my business experience is that matching funds for retirement and profit sharing and those things do not, overtime is not included in those calculations.
If you choose the base.
You use the base, the base salary or, or the base hourly rate for the matching calculation. But we would need to clarify that.
IRA is tax-free, too, right? So they don't pay taxes on what.
Right. Any, any contributions they choose to contribute would come out pre-tax, so they would not be taxed on it. And our, anything we contribute as the city would obviously be tax-deferred. It wouldn't be taxable until they draw it out at either early or at 59 and a half, but they draw it earlier, there's a penalty involved. But that's all IRS rules.
Technical plating.
Mhm. I did. Steve sent it to me. I think he's gonna bring it up maybe in a minute.
It's on my list.
Uh, I will, uh, this retirement, I, I really wanna do that, but it's gonna be a challenge, and it may be a challenge to the extent that if we do that, we can't do anything else for the next year for employees, just to be honest with you. There may not be enough to do retirement and races. But I'm gonna look everywhere I can, because cost of living's going up for everybody, and I understand that, it's going up for our employees, and I want to take care of it as best we can. Okay, did you say it all yet? All right. Uh, Ms. Laura?
I'm good.
Okay, Steve?
I've actually got two things, and they're both related to email. Are you still meeting with the lady from the comptroller's office on June 5th or whatever, a Wednesday at 9:00 or 10:00 a.m.?
Am I?
I'm not sure.
We had a meeting with somebody on the ARC money, and then we met a week or so ago, and they said that would, and it was really kind of a worthless meeting, but they said that would satisfy that other. So I don't know, but I'll find out.
Well, the reason I'm asking is that email implied that they wanted to meet with all of us, and I don't know that any of us are available.
Yeah, that, that's.
At 9:00 a.m. or 10:00 a.m. on a Wednesday morning.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen. Well, I mean, I think I have mentioned that to them, Steve, there's so much of this running together on the.
She told us that it would require a, they wanted to meet with us individually, is what that was about.
Right, 'cause.
Same day, they wanted to meet with us individually.
She, she, she said it wouldn't require a meeting, 'cause you asked about the public meeting, and she said, no, it wouldn't require a meeting, because they would wanna meet with us individually, and it was about that online education thing that we got a notice about in November, and we didn't hear anything else about it until two weeks ago, and she's claiming we heard about it in January and February, and I'm like, I didn't hear anything about it.
Why they didn't, our employees didn't make the training hours?
Training hours by the May 15th deadline.
Yeah.
But you already handled that. You already handled that. So we don't need to make you the.
I think I have, but let me make sure. Um, and I'll get you an answer.
Yeah, I just.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'll tell you now, I'm not available at 10:00 a.m. on Wednesday, June 5th.
I know, just because they work eight to 4:30 doesn't mean everybody else does.
And my second item, I think we all received an email from technical plating.
Mhm.
Expressing interest in the five-acre lot over in the industrial park that is the only vacant lot over there that's still owned by the city. Um, I don't know what everybody's opinions on that are, um, but several of you know that I am a real estate person. I'm active in real estate and have been for many years. My initial thought was that if nothing else, I think we should pursue with them and see exactly what they're talking about, what they're thinking in terms of terms and timeframe and, you know, if we would consider selling it. Um, I know they've approached the council, apparently, previously about this.
What they've approached in the past was a swap, where we took that property over there and they took that out there, and their, their predecessor, their, one of them's father, um, and we would've been buying some environmental issues there.
Exactly.
And so that, that didn't get very far. Now, if this is an outright purchase, my suggestion, and I just had a little time to think about it, but my suggestion would be that we get to J E C D B to give us an idea of what they think they could sell that property for on the open market to an industrial prospect.
Mhm.
You verify that with your experience, and then we talk to them about selling. I have no problem recommending a sale to them as long as the business goes out there. In other words, I don't wanna sell the property and it sit vacant and then be the owner. Now, you know, maybe in that situation, you give them an option. Here's the price, we'll give you an option.
Right.
If you don't, you exercise it in a year.
Right. You, you had an option, you exercise it, and you have to start construction of your new facility within 180 days or something like that.
Yeah. They've been a good, in my mind, they've been a good corporate citizen here for many years, and they've worked some people down there, uh, over the years, and they're good people. The times I've met with them, they're good people that seem to be very honest people, and I, I certainly have no problem pursuing that as long as we don't give up that little asset there.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Well, I've used them multiple times in the past, our, our shops, they played a lot of stuff, of course.
Really? Okay. They are, they're nice people.
Well, um, if, if I can do this, um, with the blessing of the council, uh, I'm, I'm willing to pursue conversations with them in terms of trying to get more details on what they're looking to do, if they're looking for a swap, if they're looking for a straight buy, and obviously, it's nothing but info gathering information.
Sure.
'Cause I know you're busy right now and will be for the next month or two.
Forever.
But, uh, like I said, with the permission of my fellow council members, I will pursue that.
I'm, I'm good with that. Uh, everybody okay with that? You wanna form a motion, or you just wanna head shake?
You tell me what we need to do. I don't.
You talk to them as far as, I'll, I'll make you my emissary or whatever that is.
Okay.
Um, but I'm curious, though, and tell them that we're interested, uh, and as far as I'm concerned, they've been, they've been good corporate citizens here.
Yeah. Well, and, anyway, I'll, I'll do that. Like I said, I'll.
And I'll talk to, I'll talk to Tammy at J E C D B and get her to give me an idea on what that would sell for in the open market with what they're dealing with across the county.
Right. Yeah. Well, please copy me on that.
I will.
In that way.
I will. She actually asked me about it a week or 10 days ago, and she asked me, was there anything? And I said, there may be something working on this. And, and her words were, I think, something that's similar to the effect, that's a pretty valuable piece of property. So, now, how you define valuable? Excuse me, I don't know.
Would you just make that deal with them, or are you talking about if we're willing to sell it, it needs to go out there to see who the highest bidder is?
Well, we need to have a price.
Right.
What we've done in the past is if somebody approached us, we came up with a price, and we sold different acreage tracts out there for different prices over the years. But as, they're already here. My thought would be if they, if we come up with a price and they wanna pay it and are willing to move their business out there, I think we ought to consider that.
Yeah. And when I initially read their email, my perspective was if they're willing to relocate from in-town to out there and willing to buy it outright, not any kind of swap, because there's gonna be environmental issues with their existing site, that it would be potentially good for the city, 'cause one, we could use the cash inflow from the sale, and secondly, we'd be converting a currently non-taxable piece of property into a commercially taxable piece of property. But I don't, anyway, we just have, as long as I get permission to pursue, I'll get more details of title report back next month.
Go for it. And a lot of us remember, some of you may not know the history of that building, this is your history moment, I always do this every month, not meaning to, but that used to be the old Carnation Milk Factory, and worked a lot of people here, uh, including my grandfather. And, uh, I still have people now, not as many as, 'cause I'm older, but I've had people in the past come up and say, my momma or my daddy worked there, uh, years ago. It's kinda like the train. It, it had a big impact on this community, right there off the square. Yeah, Steve, if you do that, and I'll ask Tammy to give me a price, what she thinks.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Cal?
Uh, I've got a small thing. I've had a lot of people asking about what are we gonna do about pickleball. We talked about this some time ago, and it's a lot of people that's getting really interested in pickleball now. So, is it something we want to sue, or maybe get the scouts to set up something for us?
Well, it may be something that we can consider, Al, and that ARC money that I was talking about.
Yeah.
Trying to make it score as far as we can, but, um, that's something I'll put in the hop. Okay. I don't know what it costs.
I have no idea.
I don't know what it costs either, but I do know we've got a perfect site, well, not so much perfect, 'cause it was set up for batting cages, but we've got a location back here that, don't know what it would take to convert it into a level surface, but you could probably get three courts right out here behind this building.
On, on this, where the batting cages used to be?
Right.
It's been concrete thing, it drains in the middle.
You would need, you would need to level it out.
Yeah.
Because it was built for the batting cages to grab and feed the balls back to the middle, but it's not in use, you can't park on it, well, some people park on it.
They are, yeah.
But it, you could probably get, I would think, it, I know at least two, possibly three pickleball courts in that area, but you, you'd have to have some construction to push some more concrete.
Concrete to fill it in.
And do something with the concrete to level it out, but.
I'd like to do something at that spot, 'cause it's, it's not really an ice hall, but it's, there's no way.
Yeah. And again, that's, I mentioned it last month, when we have our audit, we need to reevaluate our asset list, because those batting cages are still actively listed on our asset list. And all we have left of them is a concrete slab.
That's it. Okay. All right. That's a good suggestion, man. What else you got?
That's it.
Glad you're upright, buddy. I didn't know that you had taken a tumble.
I'm getting real slow, but I'm, I'm making it.
But you're on the way back.
Yeah. I hope you had a little accident, too.
Yeah, I did. I did. I got, I was sitting dead still on the interstate north in Nashville, headed to Paris Landing for a conference. Young guy ran me in the back, totaled my car, ran me into another car. Quite a ride there for about a second and a half, seemed like 10 minutes, but like I said, you know.
As long as you didn't get hurt.
I didn't have any broken bones and no skin broken, but I did have some.
So were you.
Yeah.
Did you call Morgan and Morgan?
I hadn't yet. I hadn't yet, John. I just, I don't know whether John Morgan's gonna leave that palatial estate in Atlanta that he has to come up here and handle my nickel-and-dime case. Uh, you know, everybody that sees that on TV thinks he's around here, and he's, he lives in Atlanta, and, uh, they don't, they don't do a lot of work here.
He's a nationwide franchise owner.
Yeah. He's come up with a great idea, but it's made him a lot of money. But, yeah, I did, I, but I, I was fortunate, good Lord is looking after me. Uh, anybody else? John, we got anything?
No, sir.
Anybody from that dark area over there, that corner? Anybody? Anybody? All right, I'll entertain a motion to recess. To second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, get up and go home.